The orders are work session for September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. I'm going to ask council member Chris, can you give us our opening invocation? Please stand if you're able.
God, we've come to you today, Father. We just thank you for the gathering, the men and women, Father, in this room, Father, and may each one, Father, be a blessing to you, Father. May each one with the way that they run their departments at the city here, Father. May they, Father, do your will, Father, for everything. Father, up here on the council, Father, we ask the same deal, Father, that our intentions be built around you and not around our personal lives, Father, but around you. And we just say all of this, Father, in Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Amen. All right, let's begin with discussion on item number three. An update on the Rochester feasibility research and any potential partnerships with the city and Habitat for Humanity. Jeff?
Good, thank you. Want to just provide a little bit of an update. You know, we signed it at MOU, it's been probably a month and a half ago or so that we have been doing some bloodwork. And I've run along our technical director, Joey Hoffman, just to provide an update specifically on the Rochester feasibility. Yeah, so thank you again for letting us chase this out and kind of being open to some crazy ideas. So what we did, we split up a few different tracks that we were interested in, and we're still chasing those out. We talked to an attorney about some of the mineral issues. That doesn't seem to be an issue. And so for Rochester specifically, we got an environmental report done. I think someone at the city talked to the surveyor on that. And basically, everything came back clean. You know, they withdrew all the historical records. There was one small thing that came up that, you know, a million years ago, someone had buried some salt, but we don't seem to think that that was an issue. And so I ran this by my board and just said, here's where we are with this situation. We've reviewed this. We're going to take this to the city council and present it to them, and they don't have any issue moving forward with any of the developments with that. And so we appreciate you letting us get this far. I think the next step would be, would y'all be comfortable moving to the next step and consider gifting it to us so that we can start moving forward with the development plans and all the work to get it into buildable houses?
I think the answer is yes, but I'm going to ask my council to speak up and kind of give us a go ahead, thumbs up, thumbs down, gentlemen?
Certainly thumbs up.
Anything and everything we can do for affordable houses?
I agree, hundred percent. Agree with Chris?
I do.
I think the answer is yes. Aaron? Oh, your mic went on. We, let's see here, I think the next step then, we have to put it on our regular agenda, item four, October fourteenth, our next meeting.
Okay.
So we'll definitely get it on the agenda and with the plan of moving forward with, I'll let the smarter people figure out what the next step actually is, but we'll consider and make whatever motion needs to be made to get it moving forward, okay?
Okay.
Gentlemen?
Super excited about that.
Fantastic, we appreciate it. Joey, you've been doing okay?
I am, it's good to see you.
Good to see you. Amy says hello.
Thank you, I was at Midland City Council this morning and saw her there.
Okay, double dipping, two council meetings in a day, you get to go home.
Y'all stack them right there next to each other.
Jeff, Joey, thank y'all very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Move to agenda number four, discuss the purchase of five-year extended warranties that include included engine and transmission for solid waste and public works, street trucks. Mark Cutt?
Mayor and council, the city has been receiving new trash and public works trucks for over a year. All but four units are without a five-year extended warranty for the engines and after treatment. These two components plus the transmission are among the most expensive to work on. Thank you. Twenty-nine units were purchased from Vanguard. Four of these units do possess a sixty-month engine and after treatment warranty, but none of the units have a transmission warranty. Nineteen units were purchased from Waco Mac. Seven of these have an exhaust warranty, but none of them possess a sixty-month engine or transmission warranty. A lot of information there, sorry. Of the nineteen units purchased from Waco Mac, we are still waiting for delivery on five units. The pricing for the Waco Mac warranties is shown here. Some of them are more expensive since they do not have the California Air Resources Board Standard Exhaust Warranty. The units purchased from Vanguard do possess the carb exhaust additional warranty. As you can see, these are not all solid waste units, eleven are streets as well. Ten units purchased from Vanguard have not been delivered, but are scheduled for delivery next fiscal year. I pulled several invoices to see the average cost of an engine overhaul, as well as the cost of replacing a transmission. The cost to replace transmission is anywhere between seventeen thousand to twenty-seven thousand dollars per unit, and engine overhaul ranges from forty up to seventy thousand dollars per unit. The five-year timeframe of the warranty starts upon delivery. We are already a year into twelve of these units' warranties. Any questions? Lots of information.
So does this warranty kick in after their warranty runs out? Or is it together?
So they have a two-year warranty currently. It would extend the warranty to five years.
What's the lifespan of these vehicles?
Five years.
Okay, so we plan on getting rid of them after five years. This will make sure for those five years that we own them, hundred percent engine and transmission, which seemingly costs a hundred thou-- if you had two of them, I mean, oof, yeah.
Do we have a lot of problems with the transmissions?
Transmissions, we generally do, yes, sir.
And are these the solid waste units that are the side loaders and front loaders?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so historically, then, I guess we were not purchasing, I'm going to call them, five-year warranties, right?
I'm not sure why they were not purchased originally. They should have been, and I'm, I guess, going back and correcting the problem.
Laura, I was going to add, I think it's proactive and a common practice in many larger cities in Texas now for municipal fleet operations. But Cal, you touched on a point, a point is that a lot of times that the best negotiation is at the time of purchase.
Exactly.
But I think you're wise in pursuing that.
Thank you.
Do we need action like on the next council meeting, or so you want us to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think, I think we all think it's probably a pretty good idea, so let's just have it that on the next agenda.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right, let's go to agenda item five, don't move a muscle, because this is yours also. Discuss partnering with Sewell Ford Fleet Management, let's see if Odessa, replacement vehicles. This is Laura. Oh, what, look at the line? Yeah, yeah, okay, that's all, make sure, yeah, okay.
During the process of determining which company would utilize, we would utilize for leases, we vetted three potential vendors that would have the ability to come in and help the city replace long overdue vehicles. Sewell stood out as our overall choice. Sewell Fleet Management is a local vendor with personal service. They have the capability as well as the ability to address the problem of the city's aging fleet as quickly as possible. Sewell has vehicles on the ground, ready to go, already updated. The city's fleet will be refreshed and new, giving the employees of our great city a significant morale boost. I'd like to introduce Reed Hoffman with Sewell Fleet Management.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just make sure I know how to work this, perfect. My name's Reed Hoffman, I'm with Sewell Fleet Management. And so today, we're going to, I'm going to present our fleet management program, and at the end of the day, the entire point to this fleet management program is make sure that you guys are staying within the optimal life cycle of every one of your vehicles, and we are lowering the overall fleet budget for four-year city. And so if you're looking at my slide here, what our program is designed to do is track, help you track the three largest expenses that come with a municipal vehicle. And as depreciation, fuel, and maintenance. And for this initial part of this conversation, depreciation strictly means the loss in value of your vehicles, okay? And so the reason we want to do that is if you look at the left side of my handy dandy graph, we want to find through data and analytics, the sweet spot or optimal replacement period or timing for every one of your vehicles from a trash truck down to a sedan, SUV, does not matter. If you think about it, every vehicle, whether we're talking about a class eight over-the-road tractor trailer or the smallest SUV, has an optimal life cycle. They're machines, there's a diminishing point of return. And so again, we want to find where all of these variables intersect, lower your overall fleet budget. Now, the one thing that is most often overlooked is the resale portion, but to me, it is arguably the most important piece of good long-term fleet planning. And I'm going to show you with some data to back that up, but that is one of the things that we are going to do for the city over the long term, is capitalize on the resale of the vehicle. Now, I want to throw out a couple of things that I've seen throughout my career. And so when we look at municipal county government vehicles, typically compared to your commercial counterparts, a government vehicle does way less annual miles than what a commercial vehicle would do, right? And so the initial instinct is to hold that vehicle as long as humanly possible, right? Because we want to avoid, what, buying another vehicle, right? And so the way we see vehicle costs and the way that we're going to show you vehicle costs, isn't just the acquisition price or an interest rate. Just because you buy a vehicle or fund a vehicle, put it in service, doesn't mean that the cost stopped there, right? So I want you to see vehicle costs in terms of total cost of ownership. If you picture different buckets, we've got our acquisition cost, our funding, maintenance, fuel, resale, downtime, image, safety, right? And we want to use our resources in conjunction with how you are currently operating your vehicles and shrink each one of those buckets as far as humanly possible to lower that overall total cost of ownership. All right, the way we're going to do this is with our fleet management program and services. So I'm going to start here with life cycle management. And this is everything from point A when we acquire a vehicle, to point B when we eventually resell a vehicle. And what we're going to do, again, is manage the life cycle of every one of your vehicles. So our program cost is thirty dollars per vehicle per month as a part of that program. And instead of, unlike other fleet management companies, instead of charging for our ancillary programs, we include our maintenance program, our fuel car program, roadside assistance, there is a dashboard for visibility into the data, and we give you a dedicated account management team that is going to come and meet with the department heads. I would assume you guys at some cadence, but we're going to meet with the city. Usually it's quarterly, but again, we can customize that cadence because we want to be a second set of eyes and ears on your fleet data, data to be making the best recommendations. Now, when we talk about life cycle management, as I said, everything from acquisition to resale, one of the things that we are going to do, and I'm going to show you here how we're going to do this, is we want to get you as proactive as humanly possible. And when we get you proactive, one of the things that we can do is order direct from the manufacturer. And we are brand agnostic, so whether you want to do Ram Ford, General Motors, Toyota, Nissan, Maserati, whatever it is, we can order direct from the manufacturer. However, we understand that you operate in the real world, and we won't have that lead time every single time we buy a vehicle. And this is where I'm sure you're familiar with the Sewell name. We have one of the largest commercial and government dealerships in the nation, and so we have tons of new inventory with no additional markup like another fleet management company. When it comes to maintenance and fuel, we do have a pass-through maintenance program where you can outsource to the local tax base. However, I know that you have internal mechanics in an internal mechanic shop. I'm not asking you to change anything. What I am saying is that we can capture all of that data, put it into one system, and where it makes sense, again, we're not going to dictate anything, we're going to work with the department heads on how they feel the best, most efficient way to do this is. But we can either, in conjunction with the local tax base, continue to use your internal shops, maybe there's more efficient site for, for instance, I've seen this with other municipalities, where let the mechanics work on that big stuff. And again, if we're staying within the optimal life cycle of a vehicle, we just talked about warranties, the vehicle should be under warranty at all times, and all we should be doing is preventative maintenance. So maybe there's a way that we could do a hybrid type program. But again, if you want to stick with solely using the internal shop, by all means, go for it. I think I'm going to stop there. All right, now we're going to talk about funding. So the way that Sewell Fleet Management sees funding, it is strictly a strategic mechanism to get you from point A when you acquire a vehicle to point B when you eventually get out. We want to marry two main goals with a vehicle. Number one is the operational use of the vehicle. Number two are the budgetary concerns, restrictions, or just how you want to treat your budget. So at the end of the day, it really doesn't matter how you fund a vehicle with Sewell Fleet Management. If you want to pay cash or outlay a budget line item for a single vehicle, you are welcome to do that. If you want to do a traditional finance, I think we're all used to how we would go finance our personal car, you can do that as well. One of the things that I'm willing to talk about today, if you have any questions, one of the things that we are very successful with is we do municipal, municipal track leasing, it's called a bunch of different things. And I know as soon as I say the word lease, there's a preconceived notion usually in somebody's mind about how a lease works. Like, again, if we were going to go down and lease our personal car, and this works nothing like this. The main concept with one of our municipal leases is to maximize budget, maximize cash flow. So if we are picking or trying to pick a specific point in the future to get out of a vehicle, why outlay all of that cash, all of that budget? So what we're going to do is only have you guys pay for the portion of the vehicle that you use. And so with our leasing, there are no over mileage charges, no mileage restrictions, no wear and tear penalties, there are zero. You're going to build equity during the funding term to use like a down payment on the next vehicle. Also, you can outfit the vehicle, modify it however you want. Again, we do this fleet management and leasing with many, many law enforcement departments across the state of Texas, and I'm sure you know how much outfitted equipment goes into one of those vehicles, right? So if you, what I'm going to show you next, if you picture this entire program and the goal of this as a three-legged stool, we want to match the correct life cycle of the vehicle with the strategic funding, so we're keeping that budget in so we can use it other places, and then capitalizing on the resale to lower the entire overall budget. And so what I'm going to show you next, we did a fleet analysis for the city, and I know there's a bunch of numbers on here, bear with me. So this first part is the multi-year fleet planning toolkit. Remember how I said we want to get you as proactive as humanly possible so we can order direct from the manufacturer? So we took, this is just a screenshot, we took your entire fleet list, four hundred and twenty-eight vehicles, put it in here, and what we were looking for is the age of the vehicle, the type of vehicle it is, whether it's gas or diesel, how many miles they currently had on it. And then what we want to look at, if you look at that annual mileage column, we want to, we want to track and we want to understand what each one of your vehicles' historic annual mileage pattern is. And it has nothing to do with funding or charging or anything, because then we can come over to the right where you see the years, one, two, three, four, and five. And we could put Xs into the appropriate box cell year, however you want to look at it, of when we're anticipating that each one of those vehicles should be replaced. And so again, what we can do is come to the council every single year and say, hey, this is our plan, we can look out the next five years, and we can, we can be proactive. And I think if COVID taught us anything, it's that those organizations, even companies that at least had a plan that they were working off of, it was at least easier to audible. But if we're waiting and being reactive, number one, we're at the mercy of whatever the market has, also, we're going to pay more for those vehicles. So this is a way to get us proactive over the next five years. But the cool thing with this is that every version of fleet planning that we put in here, because this is meant to be a collaborative process, it flows through here to this analysis results. And big picture here, I'm going to go through the three different parts here, but big picture, what this is designed to do, at least this first iteration, is take an average twelve month snapshot of what your city has typically spent over, over the years in acquisition, funding, maintenance, and fuel. And so if you look at the top left-hand corner there, under current situation, this analysis had four hundred and twenty-eight vehicles in it, I'm going down the column labeled fleet, four hundred and twenty-eight vehicles. The average vehicle for the city had fifty-five thousand miles, the average vehicle did about eight thousand miles a year, and if we were going to go out and replace the average vehicle in this four hundred and twenty-eight, it would cost about fifty-five thousand dollars. Obviously, Tahoe's a much more, some would be less, that's the average, right? Now, what we're showing here is a very conservative maintenance spend, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars per year to maintain that four hundred and twenty-eight vehicles. And fuel, based on the price of fuel, this may change, but we've got an average of seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars that you've spent yearly fueling those four hundred and twenty-eight vehicles. What we're showing, if you go to the right on the cycling comparison, that again, on average, over four hundred and twenty-eight vehicles, you should be somewhere around a five-year cycle. The average lease payment would be nine hundred and eighty-five dollars per month. Now, we're going to put all this together, and we're going to go down to the bottom underneath where it says fleet mix, on the left, under fiscal year, where it says current, that row. Again, four hundred and twenty-eight vehicles in this analysis. On average, over the past couple of years, you have purchased thirty-seven vehicles. I took two years pre-COVID and the past two years. Obviously, some were more, some were less. If you pay cash for all thirty-seven of those vehicles, you outlaid on average about two million dollars in budget to fund those thirty-seven vehicles. We bring the maintenance and fuel down from the top, so your overall fleet spend on average in a given twelve months is about three million dollars. Now, we're going to go down to year one, right underneath where it says current. What we are showing is that the city currently has one hundred and six vehicles that are either past optimal replacement benchmarks, or in the next twelve months going to be past optimal replacement benchmarks. And so what we're recommending is that we make a plan to replace one hundred and six vehicles in the next twelve months. However, instead of outlaying capital, instead of outlaying budget, in this, in this sense, two million dollars for thirty-seven, we can actually fund strategically through municipal lease those hundred and six for one point two million dollars. Now, if you look at maintenance and fuel, our maintenance expense or budget is going to drop significantly, so is our fuel budget. Does anybody know why? Newer vehicles cost less to operate than older vehicles, right? And then if you look under the trade credit, remember I said that resale to me is arguably the most important piece of this whole thing? I left year one blank because we have a bunch of vehicles that are ten to fifteen years old. Whatever we get or recoup in resale value, to me, icing on the top. But what I want you to do is look down over years three, four, and five. When we are replacing vehicles at the optimal time, especially for a government vehicle, because it does such, such lower annual mileage, if we have a five-year-old vehicle with fifty thousand miles, instead of a five-year-old vehicle with a hundred and twenty thousand miles, obviously, those resale values are much different. But all in all, this said, and again, I'm willing to go into this in more specificity if you want me to, but if you look down on the right-hand, lower right-hand corner, with a strategic proactive plan, funding vehicles strategically, lowering our operational costs, and then capitalizing on the resale portion, I think conservatively, over the next five years, we can bring back about four point three million dollars back to the city budget. Safer vehicles, newer vehicles, happier employees. Also, I mentioned this dashboard, so we're going to aggregate all of this data and analytics into one dashboard that the department heads, the drivers of the city vehicles, we can push preventative maintenance reminders, but basically, we're going to take anything that has historically been manually remembered or done on a spreadsheet, and we're going to automate it. And again, keep up with all of this data where we're going to be able to track it and bring the city council updates, I guess, however you want. If you want to do it quarterly, that's fine. Also, the competitive or due diligence process is done, we don't need to go to RFP. Our program has been vetted by different purchasing cooperatives, so we're on Byboard, HDAC, TIPS, I believe we're going to use TIPS, the idea is to use TIPS for this one. But again, the due diligence process is done, and our program has been vetted by these purchasing cooperatives. That's it? Questions?
Lots.
Yeah, I know, that's a lot of information. Whenever you say, hey, get this down to like five.
Let's start with the easy one.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, I know we have our own fueling stations, and we've got them all around the city, so I don't understand how your fuel costs are going to be less than what we're paying, we're already buying in bulk.
Yeah, I'm not recommending that you utilize our fuel program, so this is where, especially with government, you've got resources that, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I was going to say, basically what you're telling me is, a 2026 model's going to get better gas mileage than a 2012 model, and a 2012 and a 2013, that's what I'm hearing you say, correct?
Oh, in fact, that's one of the biggest places I can usually point to with government fleets. On day one, you will reduce your budget. If you think about, let's take a half ton pickup truck, five or 10 years ago, got sixteen, seventeen miles to the gallon, now they get 2021. And to your point, even a sedan or a small SUV, 10, 12 years ago, twenty miles to the gallon, everybody, hey, great, now we're talking thirty-two, thirty-five miles to the gallon. But, and that really is the idea. But again, to your specific question, keep, keep the way you guys are doing fuel, what we want to do is capture that cost, put it in the dashboard, we have ways of doing that. And if, maybe there's an opportunity, if people are traveling for training or something, and they're not at one of the fueling stations, we can have some gas cards out there to help them purchase, again, to track that fuel cost, but.
Well, that was really a minor deal. I'm more worried about the warranty work, because I, you know, I know how busy y'all are, and I drive by, you know, I drive by the dealership all the time, and I'm just curious, how, how long is it going to take to get a vehicle serviced if it goes down? And we decided we don't want to do it, it's under warranty, it's got to come back to you, whether it's Ford, Chevrolet, or whatever. So you need to explain that, because we can't have a unit or two units or three units tied up, in my mind, for a month, waiting to get the service done because you're backed up.
You're exactly right, yeah.
You've got a lot going on over there.
No doubt, so for our, and you're welcome to jump in here too, but for our fleet management customers, what we do at our service locations, we give you priority servicing in terms of time, so we guarantee diagnostics done within seventy-two hours, things like that. But we understand that you can't be without a vehicle, and that is one of the things where we've got ASC certified technicians that work for Sewell Fleet Management. I'm not talking about turning wrenches at the, at the service location. But every vehicle that goes in for maintenance, we've got a team, your account management team, that is going to be managing to make sure that it's not just sitting there, that it's going through the process in a timely fashion.
Okay. Well, I, so you're saying there's no, there's no mileage limitations, there's no excess wear and tear, which is terrific, because I know our police vehicles get a lot, you know, all of our vehicles get a lot of wear and tear. But the fact that you're taking, you're giving us twenty percent residual, instead of us just going to auction, which is what we usually do, right Laura, we're taking them to auction, where you're going to get so not near as much money for them as.
Well, so I want to be very clear, and I have this conversation all the time, when you hear the term residual with leasing, everybody typically says, oh, well, the residual is what the guaranteed, what were you going to give me for the vehicle once I turn it in? This leasing does not work anything like that. So the residual for us, what we do with our leases, is we pick a strategic point to stop the depreciation or stop the payments. And so when you look at twenty percent, what we're doing is only funding eighty percent of the vehicle, so we're going to, we're going to stop the lease. With twenty percent of that vehicle's value left over, that's what we call the residual. When we go in and resell it for you, and again, we do this strategically, this is how you build the equity, when we go and resell it for you, it's going to be more than that residual, and the city keeps the difference.
The difference, yeah, I'm only familiar with, with individual, I mean, I've leased since nineteen ninety, because you're only paying for what you use, and that, you know, cars depreciate so fast. So anyway, I just want to make sure, I guess what I'm really liking about this is that we won't run into what we're running into now, old, old vehicles, and people missing times and not getting vehicles replaced. I mean, hell, we got, uh-oh, we got eleven units, five, we've got eleven units stuck in Oklahoma City right now, which is really upsetting me, so I'm sorry, I got to pay the pot. We've got eleven units stuck in Oklahoma City right now, which is really upsetting me. So I'm sorry, I gotta pay the pot. Ma- well, that's all the mayor's money in there right now, so.
This really is the difference, and it's the counterintuitive part, right? 'Cause we even do it in our personal lives. If I'm only putting eight thousand miles a year on a vehicle,
Yeah.
we're like, man, we can hold that thing for all, all kinds of time, right?
Right.
But we're talking about four hundred and twenty-eight vehicles, and as we get to a certain time, again, a vehicle's a machine. As it gets older, it gets used, there's a diminishing point of return. But what I, what I'm asking you to understand is with, with, with the lower annual mileage, you have an advantage over any other commercial company in, 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 in the area, in the world, and we can capitalize on that resale.
You would retain your equity, and our real agenda is, is how do we create a life cycle that, that mirrors the life cycle of the vehicle, so you're able to turn and burn? So the idea is that you don't go into the service department because you have a newer fleet. And you're not having to stick an eight-year-old vehicle in the service department for, you know, about any given particular time.
That makes, makes perfect sense. I did talk to, I did talk to, so the council certification, I did talk to, to Mr. Sewell about all of this. And the, the thing that I like, and Mr. Crump both, the thing that I really like, that I really like about this is the fact that, as I understand it, in Fort Worth, uh, chief, your cruisers are there, on the ground, in Fort Worth, whichever ones you want. And they have, you know, instead of us having two-year-old vehicles still hung up in Oklahoma City, which are gonna be two, two years old, and like Colin told me, you know, first thing you have to do is change the tires to get it down here, so, or get it on a transport. Yeah.
Yeah, so they're in Navasota, uh, and currently have a fitter, and we approximately have about two hundred, uh, police rated vehicles, whether it be, uh, PIUs, PPVs, uh, and pickups or SUVs. And, uh, we are constantly, uh, feeling that to, to make sure that we have, uh, pre-built vehicles ready to go, lights and all.
Oh, so you're like, they ought to be outfitted?
Yep, so currently we have about thirty or forty vehicles that are pre-built, so if you get into an accident, we have a replacement for that, uh, vehicle right away. You're not having to wait six, eight months to a year, in this case, maybe two, uh, for your outfitter to, to get them outfitted. So we're really trying to back the program, uh, with some, some hard, uh, vehicles behind it.
I have a question, Laura. It may be your question. Is this all the city vehicles, like all the side loaders, or is it just mainly pickups and some?
The four hundred and twenty-eight vehicles that he, he mentioned were just what they call the white fleet, um, and not everything. Those are in addition.
Gotcha. That's why I was gonna make sure those weren't included.
So we're looking to lease the chief's cars also, or just her car?
No, no, I think everybody, everybody.
We have the ability to lease your, your trash trucks. And by the way, thank you for getting the trash trucks out there. You know, I, I, there was a time where we would get, uh, trash picked up within, you know, a week or so, or maybe longer. That's been a huge help for us.
It, it was a team effort, I wanna thank really our solid waste management and the guys for doing it. They did a good job.
Yeah, absolutely.
But yeah, we, we do have the ability to fund anything from just a, a, a normal white fleet sedan to a law enforcement vehicle, to a fire engine, to a trash truck. And again, at the end of the day, we're, we're trying to match that funding instead of outlaying, you know, one point two million dollars, whatever it is, let's fund that over the life of the vehicle and keep that budget so the city can use it elsewhere.
So I had a question, like all of these vehicles that we bought and haven't gotten yet, what can we do with those? Like, is there a?
So what, what we're looking at doing is, like, just take the trash trucks, for example. We've got a lease buyback program. And so for the vehicles that are currently, that you've taken possession of, one of the things we're looking at doing is basically buying them back from you guys, putting them on a lease, injecting that bu- cash or budget back to the city. The ones you haven't taken possession of yet, we'll just put on a normal lease, so you don't have to outlay that budget. But there, there's a couple of different ways that we can skin that cat, and we wanna be strategic as possible.
Yeah, but the, the problem, I, I'm just, and that's a good question, Craig, 'cause I'm, what I'm concerned about is the cruisers that we haven't got delivered yet are two years old.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I mean, I don't even think we, I mean, if, if it was my business, I'd tell them to stick them in their ear, and we're not taking delivery on them, and I don't, you know, and I guess we could take, take the luring, sell them and get what we can get for them, but, you know, I don't know if there's a market for that, or, anyway, I don't know. But, but we can't continue for this to happen because we, we need to stay current and have the vehicles that we need, and that's, and it, it's, the ball's just been dropped on, you know, I'm not mad at anybody, as Cal would say, but, you know, we gotta get this on an even keel so that our, our fleets get refer, you know, uh, refreshed, you know, and are operable.
Yes, sir, and that's where the, that's where the proactive planning comes in. 'Cause when we, again, we're, we're gonna be putting orders in months, if not, you know, six months ahead of when we actually anticipate that vehicle to be replaced. And so instead of we're, we're not waiting two years because we're waiting on parts or something like that, that's already gonna be built into the lead time.
So I know that twenty-twenty happened and it, it really killed the Tahoe production, which is what all the police and sheriffs and everybody liked to use. And so where is that, where does that stand now? Are they more readily available?
So currently, uh, so currently, they're still under controlled allocation, according to GM, uh, and would remain through the twenty-twenty-six model. Uh, fortunately, we have some stashed away if we needed to, uh, supplement, you know, something, we could probably get our hands on a handful uh, to help you guys out with it. But yeah, it'll be controlled allocation for twenty-twenty-six. Uh, twenty-twenty-seven, we're being told that it'll start opening up allocation. The good news is we sell all the brands, so Ford, Chevy, and, and, uh, Ram.
Yeah, I was awa- I was aware of that. So I know that, chief, I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you guys like the Tahos the best, right?
I think they've switched.
Oh, they went to Expeditions.
I was, I was about to answer that question, but I'll let chief do it.
Oh, you, you're off on those?
Yeah, I think Expeditions is probably on there. We, we have a lot less mechanical issues with, with Expeditions.
I needed to ask that question. So we got eleven hung up. We have, I saw Aaron stand up.
So, I was gonna say, I think it's forty-six.
Why do I have eleven stuck in my head?
We're waiting on, we're waiting on delivery of some units, so it's, it's, it's more than that. Yes, sir.
What's the number?
Um, more like, close to fifty.
He's ruining my day.
Well, you put ten dollars in, you got an extra cuss word to say.
No, I, I put ten dollars.
I know.
You got an extra one. You prepaid.
Just a quick one. Just the idea for art, city employees, for newer, safer, more efficient vehicles. Um, excellent idea. Comment in larger cities just as well. Um, clarification question. The sweet spot in leasing three to five. So you are maxing out at five?
It depends on the vehicle, actually, in the life cycle, right? So if you're putting more miles or engine hours, quite frankly, will also, uh, really play a part into that. So it's not necessarily, um, time period or a mileage period. You need to really take consideration all the variables into resale, fuel, uh, mileage, and then time. And then I would even throw in model year change. If there's a model year change, it lowers your resale value, which would then change your variable.
Yeah, just for clarification.
There, there, there was also a, a part that, that I missed. There's, with our municipal leasing, there's no early term penalties. And this is something that the account management team is, is gonna be bringing to the table during these quarterly reviews. It's not something that's ever gonna sneak up. And so there's been, there's been instances uh, where, where we've recommended, for whatever the market condition is, it's like, hey, reset, just take after COVID, for example, resale value of used vehicles shot, shot through the roof. Hey, and I know we have this on a four or five-year lease, whatever it is, let's get out of this thing early. We can get you another five grand in resale equity. So I, I, I understand your point. We've got some flexibility, and it's not anything that is gonna sneak up on you or you have to dedicate yourself to five years ahead of time.
Excellent.
So you actually monitor the engine time as well, 'cause I know the policing is run all the time. Chief Cotton, do yours run all the time when they're at a call? I mean,
Yeah.
Do they? They're always running?
That, that's one of the biggest variables with law enforcement vehicles is, you know, we, we can see a vehicle with twenty-five, thirty thousand miles, but the engine hours, it's like, hey, we, we need to get out of this thing now.
Yeah.
Chris, one more question. You had some telematics on here.
Yes, sir.
Now, is that like GPS and dashboard cameras and making sure nobody's texting and driving and?
Yep, we, we can do that, that entire thing. Honestly, you know, it's not that commonly that, that is used within government. I think that's gonna be changing. And the law enforcement usually has the Axon system and things like that. So for the white fleet, we do have, if, if that's something that you're interested in a segment or the entire fleet, we can and do have that ability.
It will allow us to pull more accurate data, 'cause we'll be able to pull fa- fault codes, uh, engine runtime data, mileage, and, uh, putting that all into the aggregated data allows for better information in the life cycle management.
Good question.
Anything else, gentlemen?
I know Midland, I got confirmed, Midland just went to, to doing the leasing programs, so, yeah.
With us.
I knew, I knew.
I think, uh,
It's becoming more common practice.
I hear from councils, we're, we're, we'll move forward on this. So Laura, you put it on the agenda and appreciate everyone coming and helping us better understand the program. Thank you.
Try to get our, try to get our fleet back up and going and we just have to figure out a plan. And we got our, David, we gotta figure out a plan on what to do with those other vehicles. I, I mean, these guys will help us, I know, so.
Fifty vehicles.
Think that sounds like a conversation we need to have.
I'll leave that up to staff.
We're gonna need that tip jar, I can tell you that much right now.
We are.
All right, guys, go to gen item number six, the update on the Texas Department of Transportation I-20 YD project coordination. Uh, Alex.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Uh, a couple months ago, I brought to you the Tech dot utility relocation uh, project that we were going to, that we are moving forward with, with them. Uh, I wanted to kinda just give you an update on the current project, uh, where we're at with that. Uh, I wanted to go over just a few things again, um, on that. It's twenty-six thousand one hundred linear feet of water, uh, utility relocations, uh, six thousand seven hundred feet, linear feet of wastewater relocations with a total of fifty-four relocations. Uh, when we brought this project to you in the, a couple months ago, we spoke about the engineering and design being around five million dollars, uh, construction being, uh, about fifty-eight million dollars totaling to a sixty-three million dollar for the engineering and design and construction. Um, after working with Tech Dot, uh, we've collaborated together, uh, on a joint bid process. So this will take away the city's portion in the construction of the project. Um, so what the city is going to be liable for at this point would just be the engineering and design and the construction services during, uh, the project, uh, which has totaled up to, um, four point five million, which is what we have for the engineering and design. And then construction service after that. So inspection services, making sure that, um, the implementation of the utili- the new utility relocations are done correctly. Um, we don't have a price for that yet, um, but we will, we will figure that out once the engineering and design is complete. So this joint bid with Tech Dot is pretty much going to, uh, make the, the city liable for the engineering and design. We will give the plans over to Tech Dot. They will incorporate those plans into their, um, construction portion of the project. And then we will work together, um, on making sure that everything is placed correctly. Um, so Tech Dot is going to incur all of the cost for that. So we're only liable for the engineering and design and construction services. Um, so it is no longer sixty-three million dollars. Um, another.
Good job, Alex.
Made somebody happy today, Alex.
There you go. I'm glad we can do that. So, um, so, so on, on the second note, we did go to the ODC board, uh, and request, uh, five million dollars for the engineering and design. Uh, we requested originally the four point five million, um, and then they gave us an additional, just in case if we ran into any issues with engineering and design. Uh, that is a loan that we were going to get, uh, receive from them, and then we will pay that back once we get the reimbursement back. So we still are going to be on the hook, uh, for the reimbursement for the engineering and design and construction services. Um, but that's, it's the only five million dollars, and then the construction services will be the second portion, wh- once they're in, uh, construction. So just wanted to inform you guys on that and
It's a lot better.
We will be bringing you guys the proposal for the engineering and design on, uh, the next work session, and then we'll, it'll go to council, uh, consent after that, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, we appreciate the report.
Very good job, Alex. Way to, way to stay on him, 'cause that, that, that's good work.
Wasn't just me, but it was a little bit of everybody.
Teamwork.
Absolutely.
Tip of the spear.
Thank y'all very much.
All right, gen item seven, discuss fund transfer and allocation for McKinney Park. John?
Mayor, council, good afternoon. Uh, we are discussing the transfer of seven hundred thousand dollars from within the park's budget, uh, to a project account. Uh, the funds will be allocated for improvements to McKinney Park, um, to facilities and fields. Uh, the, this is a approval or discussion of tr- the transfer of funds. We're currently working with Gordian on a proposal for the, uh, the upgrades. And once we have that proposal, we will bring the, uh, total cost of the project back to council.
You probably need to put the sewer line back in your budget for that park out there to, um, get it stopped up again this weekend.
Okay, I, Floyd Gwynn? Yes, sir. That, that's been, um, a little bit of a, of a challenge. We have spent a lot of time, uh, this year out at Floyd Gwynn, working on uh, irrigation and sewer lines. Yes, sir.
Well, the signs look fantastic on Park South, San Jacinto, Floyd Gwynn. Are they all up, or?
They're not all up. Uh, we've got about eighteen so far. Uh, a bit of a slow process with permits and, uh, dig test and getting the holes dug and the signs put up, but we're, we're definitely gaining on it.
Yeah, I asked him if we knew somebody that could help with the permits.
Well, we got, we got the permits. It's part of the process.
I smell Elizabeth.
I know a guy, I know the guy.
They were, they, they, they were, they did help tremendously.
Don't hide, don't hide over there, Elizabeth.
The, uh, Well, I noticed the benches and lights, the new lights at.
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir, we're, we're happy anytime we can light up the walking trail.
I'm just waiting on that new sign.
Yes, sir.
This is Ron McKinney, and this, we're going to talk to O, O, O A, O G S A, and that's gonna become one of their facilities, correct?
Correct. We recently met with Odessa Girl Softball Association, uh, that they are, uh, planning on playing at McKinney Park, starting in the spring of twenty twenty-six. Uh, we need to get the facilities updated first, uh, concessions, restrooms, uh, the fields ready, uh, parking lot as well. Uh, but that is the plan for the association to play at McKinney Park.
Fantastic.
My, my only concern, I have a concern there, is that when they were playing out at UTPB, uh, when we lost that lease, or when the lease ran out, at UTPB, they were a problem for taking control of those fields and not letting anybody else on them, and this is a public park.
Absolutely.
So I'm concerned about them not letting anybody else have use of the fields. And that, I don't know how you're gonna monitor that, but that was, and that, I, that was when I first came on council, five years ago. And it was a real reason, that and soccer both. Uh, because I know the UTPB couldn't even get their own girls team on there to practice, 'cause the girls softball wouldn't get off at the point of time. So I'm just concerned about that a little bit.
Sure, that's, that's absolutely.
We have to make it available for our citizens.
A hundred percent. That's always a, a, you call it a concern with any association when they're utilizing city facilities. Um, when we met with O G S A, they did, uh, they asked, uh, they brought it up to make sure that travel teams, local teams would be able to use the facility when they were not using it. Um, in the, with the association agreement during their season, uh, their games and practice schedules, they do have those facilities to reserve. Otherwise, we do rent them, or they're first come, first served to the public.
Just, but, okay, so you reserve them, is that, is that Monday through Sunday, or is it?
It's, yes, sir. It, it's Monday through Sunday, depending on when the league plays. Um, it, when the league turns their schedule in, if they play Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, those days and times will be blocked off. Otherwise, it is available to the public. And, and we, uh, we definitely, um, work with each association to enforce that, to, um, we know the need to, to be open and accessible.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And after maybe in the next twenty-six months, that won't be a problem anymore. Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Any questions for John?
Good, good.
Thanks, John, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, just wanted to point out that this item is also gonna be at our six o'clock meeting for action. So that's, that's not something we like to do, is put it on the work session and our six o'clock meeting, but it just so happened where you have some time restrictions on this item. We wanna get it done before October first, so that's the reason for that, so I just wanted to.
I bet we'll be prepared by six now. Now, 'cause of John, thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, gen item eight, discuss the lease agreement with the Trace Legato Land Company LP for purposes described as a six point four seven seven acre tract of land. a six point four seven seven acre tract of land, more or less, located in section nine block forty-one, Hector County, purpose of storage of goods and equipment, Keith.
Uh, thanks Mayor, just put it on the work session because this involves parkland. And you cannot sell parkland without going to a citywide election, but you can lease it. However, you're restricted on your lease, it has to be for a very short term, I think this one is for three years. The lease has to be non-exclusive. The city must reserve the right to go back in at any time and use the premises as a park, which this agreement does. The compensation that the city receives has to be very small, because you don't want anyone to interpret this as a sale really. So it has to be small. The penalty, if, if anyone would, if a court would say that it's actually a sale, it would revert back to the people who donated it. So cities are very careful about, about that. I looked at the deed, there's no reversionary clause in the deed, so don't have to worry about that. And we don't, the lease does not allow any permanent structure to be built on the premises. So I think this falls right within what the Attorney General has told us to do when you're leasing parkland, so I'll be glad to answer any questions. And I've worked closely with Councilmember Thompson on it, so.
Yeah, just, Mr. Sewell's just gonna, this is behind the parking lot, he's got it on Treasure Monus. And it's a, it's part of the belt, it's Harriet Thoddees, gave that to the city, I guess way back when. So you can't even hardly get access to it, so all he's gonna do is park some cars back there and put another building on the thirteen acres, I think is what he's planning on doing. So he was okay with all that, so it'll be good to go.
Do you have any questions? It's not, do we need action in a, in a, to do that?
Mayor, we've got it for action on your six o'clock meeting.
We're just getting all kinds of stuff.
Again, we don't like to do that, but I know they want, they're wanting to move on it, Councilmember Thompson's wanting to move on it, and it's just, it's something that we think would work out for everybody.
Refresh on our memories.
Something will get done.
It also proves the government that doesn't always move slow.
That's right, that's exactly right. Alright, thanks Keith.
Yes, sir.
Gen item number nine, pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section five fifty-one point one oh one, City Council will hold an executive session, which is closed to the public, to discuss the following matters as permitted under the following sections of the Texas Government Code. A, as authorized by the Texas Government, so section five five one point oh eight seven, preparation regarding economic development negotiations, we're gonna discuss economic development. Do you have any motion going to executive session?
Somewhere.
Motion by Councilman Canal, second by Councilman Haney, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's unanimous and passes, we're now in executive session at three fifty-eight P M.
We move to come back in?
Need a motion to come back in.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Stoker and a second by Councilman Tompkins. Come back in, we're now out of executive session at 4:42 PM. No action was taken in the executive session. Agenda item number 10, I need a motion.